Coming up on UGTV. Board of Commission Meeting of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas.
Roll call, Mugia. Johnson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Markley.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Fieldbrook. Bynum.
Here.
Burrows.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
McKeonan.
Here.
Alvey.
Here. This evening, our invocation is being given by Reverend Al Henninger, University of Kansas Hospital Clinical Pastoral Education Supervisor. Or perhaps not.
Let us pray. Our God, we thank you for the freedom to assemble in halls such as this. We thank you for the freedom to elect our own representatives. We thank you for the opportunity to govern ourselves. We thank you for those that are willing to serve our communities. As we gathered this evening in this building, I pray that you would guide our work. May the decisions that we make here impact this city, this county, this community for the good. For good is what we seek. For good will always triumph. And we pray in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Henninger. Clerk, are there any revisions to tonight's agenda?
There are no revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So tonight, we have two distinct parts to our meeting. The planning and zoning portion will be handled first, followed by the regular commission meeting. I'll ask the clerk to read the statement required by state law governing the planning and zoning portion of our meeting, followed by the items on the planning and zoning consent agenda.
We would like to welcome all present to this meeting of the Unified Government Commission. Members of the Commission are Mayor David Alvey, Commissioner Melissa Bynum at Large District One, Commissioner Tom Burrows at Large District Two, Commissioner Gail Townsend, District One, Commissioner Brian Keonan, District Two, Commissioner M. Mugia, District Three is unable to be here, Commissioner Harold Johnson Jr., District Four, Commissioner Mike Kane, District Five, Commissioner Angela Markley, District Six, Commissioner Jim Walters, District Seven, and Commissioner Jane Fieldbrook, District Eight is unable to be here. As each petition is called this evening, all persons for or against will be given the opportunity to express their views. If this is the first time that a particular petition has been before this commission, the commission has three options. Number one, it can approve the recommendation by the Planning Commission with six votes. Number two, it can override the Planning Commission's recommendation, but it would take eight votes to override. And number three, it can return the matter to the Planning Commission for further consideration together with the statement specifying the reason for the referral back to the Planning Commission. The consent agenda is the first part of the planning and zoning agenda. Items on the consent agenda have received a unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission. Unless there is a request to set aside an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the public, the Unified Government Commission, or staff, then the Planning Commission's recommendation on all items on the consent agenda will be adopted by the Unified Government Commission at one time. I will read the list of agenda items on the consent agenda, and when I have completed the list, the mayor will ask if there are any requests to set aside items from the consent agenda. This is your time to stand up and request that an item be set aside if you do not agree with the Planning Commission's recommendation. If an item is set aside, the matter will be discussed and voted upon separately. All items not set aside will be approved with the Planning Commission's recommendation. We appreciate the attendance of those people here this evening, and we recognize the importance of each petition. We will remind you that there are a number of items on the agenda, and we would appreciate your efforts to make your remarks as concise as possible. As you come to the ask, we ask that anyone with a cellphone to please turn them off or to switch them to non-audio so you will not disturb the meeting. Once the petitioner make their presentation, anyone for or against will be allowed the maximum three minutes to state your views. As you come to the microphone, please state your name and city for the record. The mayor and commission are required to disclose contacts with proponents or opponents on any item on the planning and zoning agenda. I will ask if any members of the commission wish to disclose any contact with proponents or opponents on any item on the agenda.
Commissioner Bynum.
I've had contact on SP 2019-112.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you, Mayor. SP 2019-116, number thirty, I'm sorry, number MP 2019-6, and 2019-28, and 2019-76.
Thank you.
I will now read the items on consent agenda. Changes on application item number 1, 3210, Corp. Maxell with Pozenelli PC. Change of zone from AZ Agricultural District to CP2 Plant General Business District for the American Royal Hotel at 11704 State Avenue recommended for approval. Special use permit applications, item 1, SP 2019-76, Yfed Kaisem. Renewal special use permit for a vehicle repair body shop at 744 Kansas Avenue recommended for approval for one year. Item 2, SP 2019-113, Edward J. Bain. Home occupation special use permit for a short-term rental Airbnb at 1324 North 75th Drive recommended for approval for two years. Item 3, SP 2019-114, Bill Duckworth with Brick Road Motorsports. Special use permit for a used car lot at 2820 Row Lane Unit U recommended for approval for two years. Item 4, SP 2019-116, Corp. Maxell with Pozenelli PC. Special use permit for American Royal Events and Amenities at 11704 State Avenue recommended for approval. Vacation application, one item, number 1, UE 2019-14, Michael Callahan. Vacation of a utility easement at 5125 and 5205 North 130th Terrace recommended for approval. D, which is a plan review, applications, item 1 is PR 2019-28, Corp. Maxell with Pozenelli PC. Preliminary plan reviews for American Royal Events and Amenities at 11704 State Avenue recommended for approval. Item 2, PR 2019-30, Kurt Winters with UG Water Pollution Control Department. Preliminary and final plan review for upgrades to the existing Walcott wastewater treatment plant-influence pump station at 5425 North 99th Street recommended for approval. Master plan amendment, we have one item, which is MP 2019-6, Corp. Maxell with Pozenelli PC. It's a master plan amendment from planned commercial business park to commercial entertainment at 11704 State Avenue recommended for approval. Those are all items on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Does any member of the commission, county administrator, assistant administrator, or anyone in attendance tonight wish to set aside any item on the planning and zoning consent agenda? If an item is not set aside, all items on the planning and zoning consent agenda will be voted on by one vote to follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Please step forward.
Tom Groneman, Kansas City, Kansas. Would like to request that item 1, SP 2019-76 be set aside.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for our morning items. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Johnson.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McKeonan.
Aye.
The vote is eight to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. That takes us to the set aside item B1, SP-2019-76. I'd ask staff to make some opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a memo being passed around. Mr. Groneman joined this case late and helped us overcome some communication issues. But after the Planning Commission, we discovered a couple of items that needed to be revised, and this memo revises stipulations 3, 4, and 6. Basically, it says implement the originally approved landscape plan, and there's no further modifications to the dumpster screening that are necessary. The applicant and the staff are agreed with that and would recommend your approval of those revised stipulations.
Okay. I'd ask the applicant to come forward, present the application. Anything else, Rob?
He just did. Didn't you say you worked out something with him already?
Yeah, this memo, they've agreed to what's in this memo.
Okay, very good.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. I'm sorry? Yes, Rob, do you need something?
There's a public hearing.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you. Anyone present would like to speak in support of the application, please come forward. Anyone present would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Johnson.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Markley.
Aye.
Walters. Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McKeonan.
Aye.
The vote is eight to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. That takes us, we have one item on the planning and zoning non-consent agenda. Item number one is special use permit application, SP-2019-112, Pete Davis Jr. with KZK Properties for a car dealership with auto repair at 1830 Quindero Boulevard. The Planning Commission voted four to one for approval for two years. Staff, please offer open remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item was actually approved under a different individual's name earlier in the year. They were part of a partnership, and then the partnership broke up, and so the remaining partner has had to come back and get the special use permit in their name. There were really no issues or neighborhood complaints that Planning Commission, staff and Planning Commission, recommend approval.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Please come forward, present your application, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Pete Davis Jr., and my application is for 1830 Quindero, Kansas City, Kansas, 26104.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this? Seeing none, anyone who'd like to speak in? Oh, yes. Are you here to speak in favor?
Oh, you're speaking in favor, yeah.
Oh, yes, I'm in favor, boy.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone present would like to speak in opposition? All right. Seeing none, let's hear a motion.
Second.
We have a commission question.
I have a question for Rob. It kind of pertains to multiple items that would come before us. This one just happening to be the one that's in front of us tonight. So in the staff report talks, one of the standard items that we always see is master plan designation. And it says the citywide master plan designates this property as community commercial, and we have an adopted Northeast master plan for this area. So I just wonder, is it a technicality? Why do we not reference our adopted-as-policy Northeast master plan when we have items that are within those boundaries?
I'm not sure that that doesn't reference that, but typically on a special use permit, we don't analyze unless it's something that is significant and going to be a permanent SUP, the master plan, just because we consider them temporary, so we don't really analyze those. But Quindero was all commercial of some kind, in this section anyway, and then in the new master plan as well. I don't remember the exact term, but it is commercial in the citywide plan, it's also commercial in the, in this plan. I'll check on that and get back with you.
Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Davis. Staff had already addressed a question that I did have about action taken on the same address a couple of months ago, so he's clarified that there was a partnership. So I'm hoping that in this new enterprise, you'll be a good partner to the people who are already there in established businesses. And just as a reminder, it is a temporary, it's just two years, so there's a problem if it comes under review again. But other than that, wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Johnson.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McKeonan.
Aye.
The vote is eight to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes the planning and zoning portion of tonight's meeting. We'll now move to the regular portion of our agenda. Does any member of the commission or county administrator wish to set aside any item on the regular consent agenda? If an item is not set aside, all items on the regular consent agenda will be voted on by one vote.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Johnson.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McKeonan.
Aye.
Vote is eight to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. Our last item for the evening is a presentation in a public hearing regarding the stormwater rate. I'm going to turn this over to Assistant County Administrator Chris Well to make some opening remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a presentation tonight from Public Works and their team concerning our stormwater recommendations. I would remind the commission that you are, no action is required tonight. The Public Works staff and their team have been working on this project for about two years now. They've had multiple community engagement meetings with all sorts of stakeholders who have an interest in how we address our stormwater rates. So I'll turn this over to Jeff Fisher, our Public Works Director, and his team to make presentation. Following the presentation, I believe there are a couple of either groups or individuals that have signed up to make public comment. Jeff?
Thank you. I'll make some introductions while we're setting up. We have, thank you. Anna White with Black and Beach, economist, who has been with us throughout. She does this work all over the country. Dave Reno next to her, Public Works Community Engagement Officer, has been charged with the public engagement throughout. Sarah White, project manager, and Troy Shaw, the county engineer. I would like to recognize some people that may or may not be in the audience tonight but have been instrumental in developing, helping us shape this proposal. Mary Collins, Eleanor Jefferson, Rachel Jefferson, Doug Clements, Pat Warren, Tony Privatara, Daniel Silva, Phil Gibbs, Pete Cashin, Greg Moser, and several others, and we appreciate all their time and energy. So the single purpose of the stormwater utility is to protect life and property. Back in the 2000s, the UG, for a lot of reasons, elected to create the utility. Obviously, probably as many issues then as we have now. That's why you create the stormwater utility. 2009, it was created, stood up, and they elected to go with a flat fee. It's a simple way to go, makes sense, in the future transition. In 2009, that started out at $250 per property per month, $2.50 per property per month. In 2012, it was bumped to $450 per property per month, and is generating currently $3.5 million per year. In the preliminary master plan that's been conducted, we have $141 million in capital needs in just eight of the 50 basins in KCK, and several million per year in O&amp;M needs. The UG will never get caught up at its current rate. That is the current situation. Currently, there are over 1,000 work orders, open work orders, in our system related to stormwater. You're going to see several photos, scroll across the screen, that represent some of those work orders. I have some, a handful that I'm going to run through that I personally visited or witnessed myself, like road flooding on Donahue out west, the 2017 storms that affected the Argentine and other areas in a big way. There's an area north of Leavenworth Road in the central part of the Kansas, of the city that has reoccurring street flooding because of lack of ditches. 59th Street was closed in 2019 for a significant period of time because of a culvert under the road that had failed, is about 20 feet deep. And in fact, in order to pay for that, the UG had to defer five other planned projects. There's countless feet of corrugated pipe in the system that we don't see that is rusting and poses imminent failure. We do not have a ditching program, but will under the transition to a new rate structure. And then there are direct benefits to the street conditions, and we've talked about pavement conditions over the last year and a half, and our average pavement condition index of 56, and we know that's going to take a strong commitment for a long period of time to move the needle on that. A stormwater system, and to complement that, is very important. The roadside ditches, they don't just serve to convey water, they protect the integrity of the road. So all of these are issues that folks see every time it rains, and currently staff can only help with a fraction of those. This is a snapshot of the stormwater system, both enclosed pipe and open ditch and swale. There's 284 miles of pipe, 132 miles of ditches and swales. If you were to string that end to end, that would stretch across the state of Kansas, about 410 miles. The program is not sustainable. It's not fair or equitable or balanced. It's getting more expensive. The effects on property values are apparent, and it affects people's lives and businesses. So Anna is going to describe how we transition from current to a more viable rate structure.
So there's a financial burden associated with solving all of these issues, and it requires a transition to a balanced financial plan and an equitable and sustainable rate structure. So the costs to provide reliable stormwater service to the community includes operation and maintenance expense and capital expenditures. So this graphic illustrates those projected costs through 2027, as the UG begins to address some of the issues that Jeff just highlighted. So the capital projects are assumed to be funded from a combination of cash financing and future debt. So the green portion of these bars represents the cash financing of both the capital projects and the CMIP, the Capital Maintenance Improvement Program. The dark blue portion of these bars represents the annual debt service payments on both existing and proposed debt. So as you can see, as projects are initiated, both the cash financing and the debt service will increase. So in addition, operating expenses, which are represented by the bright blue portion of the bars, are increasing as well to address two things. First, it's to fully fund the stormwater operating costs that are currently funded from the wastewater fee. This amount is represented by the portion of the bars in 2019 and 2020 with the cross-hatched pattern. The other is to increase the operating budget by $500,000 per year to catch up with deferred maintenance and to ensure that the utility can keep up with maintenance requirements. As you can see by the bright blue portion of the bars, by 2023, anticipated operating expenses will be equal to what the cost, total costs were in 2019 for operation and maintenance expense, capital spending, and debt service. So this is additional funding for O&amp;M that will benefit everyone in the community and help address the open work orders that Jeff mentioned. So as you know, there's a financial burden associated with moving away from postponing and deferring maintenance activities and addressing the capital needs. And we could stay with the flat rate, but this is what the monthly fee would increase to each year to meet those costs. The fees that are shown here are not equitable or sustainable, and staying with the flat fee rate structure really limits the UG's ability to generate the necessary funding for the stormwater program. Therefore, it was decided that the solution would be a rate structure based on impervious area, which is an industry-accepted reasonable estimate of the stormwater service demands that properties place on the system, and it enables an equitable approach to recovering stormwater costs. Obviously, a significant change like this requires public feedback, which Dave is going to talk more about.
As Jeff mentioned, the Unified Government has $141 million in unmet stormwater needs. To begin addressing these needs, staff formed an action plan. The plans cannot exist in a vacuum. Community feedback matters, and over the past year, staff worked hard to ensure they obtained it by holding multiple open houses, meeting multiple times with the KCK chamber, running an informational video on UGTV, communicating through digital and print platforms like Facebook, Nextdoor, E-News, and the Citizen Newsletter. Visualizing the outreach performed can be difficult, but this engagement calendar should help. In the top left-hand corner is December 2018, and in the bottom right-hand corner is December 2019. The black stars represent each time a member or multiple members of staff interacted with the community about the stormwater proposal. What's important to note here are the blue, green, and purple stars. These stars represent fundamental changes to the stormwater plan. The blue star represents the creation of a credit and appeals program based on feedback. The green star represents the first time staff cut the capital program. In this context, capital program is a technical way to say projects that solve problems. The first time this fund was cut, it was cut by nearly 50% from $58 million to $36 million. The purple star represents the development of a tiered alternative similar to a system used by Ames, Iowa. The tiered alternative itself represents more than 20 changes to the stormwater proposal. The tiered alternative was shown at recent open houses and on the website. The community was invited to join staff at recent open houses through an article in the Citizen Newsletter, a newsletter that's delivered to more than 65,000 addresses. Community engagement has very much shaped this proposal, and Anna will walk us through how.
So based on the feedback that we've received over the last year, we've come up with two rate structure options. Both of these options are based on impervious area. Both will recover the same amount of revenue, but as Dave mentioned, they also both reflect a significantly scaled-down capital program. A deficiency study was conducted for eight watersheds that were identified as high priority watersheds based on the number of known problems in those areas, which identified $141 million worth of stormwater needs. So when reconsidering, considering a new rate structure, we originally started with a plan to address and fund $58 million of those projects in the eight watersheds. However, based on public feedback and the concern that the impact that this would have on residents, we have continuously and substantially scaled back the number of projects to be funded over the study period. The proposed rates are based on a $19 million capital plan that reflects only seven of the 12 identified projects, which we acknowledge that this would result in a decrease in the level of service, but we know that the fee cannot initially support a capital plan of $58 million. So rate option one is an individually calculated monthly charge based on the rates per 500 square feet of impervious area as shown. The minimum charge is $4.50, so properties that are, for example, vacant land with no structures or agricultural properties with no structures, they would pay the minimum charge of $4.50. If a parcel has, for example, 2,500 square feet of impervious area or hard surface, it's five units at. it's five units at 500 square feet per unit. So the calculated monthly charge would be $3.35, which is $5 times the 67 cents shown there for 2021. Since the calculated charge would be $3.35, this property would pay the minimum charge of $4.50. At the bottom of the slide, you can see the percentage of parcels that will pay the minimum charge of $4.50 through 2027. This percentage decreases over time as the rate per 500 square feet increases. Option two is a tiered rate structure with 13 tiers based on ranges of impervious area. So as an example, the parcel with 2,500 square feet of impervious area would fall into tier two and pay a monthly charge of $4.84. So we're showing on this slide both the percentage of parcels that fall within each tier in the column percent parcels, and then also at the bottom, the percentage of parcels that will not see an impact. So you will probably notice that the percentage of parcels not impacted under this option is less than option one, as only the parcels that fall in tier one in 2021 and 2022 will not be impacted. So by putting the properties into these blocks, it helps to address the magnitude of the bill impact. But it all depends on where the parcel's impervious area falls within the tier. So properties at the higher end of the tier would pay a larger monthly charge under option one. So by putting the parcels into these groups, it mitigates the impact on these larger properties within each tier. We can see the impact of the tiered rate structure in this next slide. So this table highlights two things. First, the difference between option one and option two for five examples. And second, the comparison with other select communities. So the examples that we're showing here, with the exception of the first one, all depict a lower monthly charge under option two. But it all depends, again, on where the parcel's impervious area falls within the tier as to whether option two results in a lower or higher monthly charge compared to option one. So properties at the low end of the tier would pay more with option two, while properties at the higher end of the tier would pay more with option one. So again, this rate structure mitigates the impact on the larger properties within each tier. If you look at some of the surrounding communities, Johnson County has a stormwater ad valorem tax that is used to partially fund stormwater projects within the county. So communities in Johnson County, such as Overland Park, have the opportunity to receive funds from the county's stormwater tax to partially fund some of the capital improvements. So Overland Park has not increased its stormwater fee in over 10 years, but they are currently contemplating an increase for 2021. The City of Lawrence is also currently conducting a rate study to determine an increase for 2021. And the City of Topeka's City Council just recently approved a series of three 7.5% revenue increases for 2021, 2022, and 2023. So therefore, by 2021, when the proposed stormwater fee would be implemented by the UG, each of these communities will have increased their fees as well. So while both option one and option two already compare favorably to the existing rates for both Lawrence and Topeka, they will be even more favorable in 2021 when these communities have increased their fees. So what is Kansas City, Kansas community going to get with this proposal? It's a sustainable program with a funding system and tangible benefits, which Jeff is going to discuss more.
Whether the Commission chooses option one or option two, there will be tangible benefits. There will be things like ditching, there will be an increase in repair and replacement. Through increased maintenance and capital investment, we will improve the quality of life for residents and businesses. We will also try to leverage these funds against other funds like preservation dollars each year, water pollution control dollars, and projects, other sources through state and federal where available. We'll pursue low-interest loans through the federal government like WIFIA, where those make sense. We've already started using green infrastructure and projects, we'll continue to do that. Staff's developing policy around that, that will help. This proposal allows Unified Government to address, over time, all of the issues that you saw in those pictures and that we face every time it rains. Again, the community stormwater system is made up of about 410 miles of pipe and ditches and swells across the city. Different sectors of the community may receive different types of services, but all benefit from the system, at least from the simple reason that all residents and businesses rely on the stormwater system to take care of their day-to-day needs. Going to work, going home, shopping, receiving deliverables. Again, there's $141 million in needs in just eight of the most troublesome basins of the 50 total basins. As a result of one year of engagement, now we have $19 million over seven years and an increased level of O and M. The pros and cons of the options are these. The current rate structure, the flat fee, again, is not fair, it's not equitable or balanced. It's not fair for a small home to pay the same as Walmart or Target. It's not the same, it's not fair for small restaurants to pay the same as Cabela's. It's problematic for the consent decree to raise our flat rate structure as high as it would need to be raised to generate these revenues. So it really only leaves option one and option two in staff's opinion. So the most objective way for staff to determine best option is to use industry litmus question, test questions like these. So we'll run through each of these with Anna. Will property, will properties pay according to the amount of stormwater runoff they contribute?
With the flat fee, the answer's no. It's not based on impervious area. Option one and option two, which are based on impervious area, do reflect the amount of stormwater contributed by each property.
Oh, sorry, I don't know what happened. Is the rate equitable for all customers?
Again, a flat fee is not equitable for all customers. Option one is the most equitable, as it's based on each parcel's individually calculated impervious area. Option two is not as equitable as option one, because properties are grouped into tiers, but it is more equitable than the flat fee.
Is the fee easy for customers to understand?
The flat fee is very easy for customers to understand. Option one is a little more difficult, as each owner needs to understand what their impervious area is and how to do the calculation to determine how many stormwater units they have. Option two is easier to understand. Once you know your impervious area, you find what tier you would fall into.
Will the rate structure sustain operations, maintenance, and capital needs?
Due to the increases necessary in the flat fee in order to, in order to implement the plan that we have proposed, the flat fee is not, would not result in sustainable funding. Option one and option two would.
Does the rate structure include a fee reduction credit program?
Flat fee does not allow the option to have a credit program, while options one and two would.
And does the rate structure reasonably mitigate the monthly bill impact?
Again, due to the necessary increases in the flat fee to implement the proposed program, it does not mitigate the bill impact for residents. Option two does mitigate the impact for residents, but as we all know, there is a significant increase for businesses, but this is addressed under option two.
Based on the questions and all of the feedback from all sectors of our community, staff believes option two is the most well-rounded and best option. Staff recommends that on January 30th, Commission adopt option two with the first three years of rates. Staff will report back to Commission annually. And after two to three years, maybe a few adjustments, but staff would recommend adopting another three years. And it's noteworthy that it would be easy to transition from option two to option one in the future. Staff recommends, well, in conclusion, I'll wrap up by saying the UG has described in Quant- and its most troubled basins, eight of 50. The public has shaped this proposal through a year of engagement. The proposal is well-rounded, considering feedback from all sectors of the community. The work plan is a great step in the right direction. Adopting this proposal sets the right path. We'll fill in any questions.
Thank you. I think we would do the public hearing, and then we'll have time for comments and questions from Commission. Okay, thank you. So as we open the public hearing, again, we have, the people have signed up, and I'd ask Ms. Collins to read the statement governing the public hearing portion.
We would like to welcome all present to the public meeting of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, regarding the proposed stormwater rate transition. We appreciate the attendance of those people here this evening and recognize the importance of your views. We would, however, remind you that there are seven individuals signed up for the proposed stormwater rate transition hearing. Each person will be allowed three minutes to speak. Should you go to the two-minute mark, I will announce that you have one minute remaining, and that will allow you time to wrap up your comments. As you come to the microphone, please state your name and city for the record. On deck means that you will be next to the podium. We would appreciate your efforts to be considerate all during the remarks. We ask that anyone with a cellphone, again, to please turn them off or switch to non-audio so you will not disturb the hearing for the recording purposes and for TV viewers. As a reminder, the public hearing is regarding the proposed stormwater rate transition. There will be David Neder will be to the podium, and Daniel Silva will be on deck.
Good evening. My name's David Canetter. I live at 13301 Hollingsworth Road, Kansas City, Kansas. My family has a couple of farms in the western part of the county. With a quick look around the city, I'm sure everybody can find a storm sewer or culvert that needs some maintenance. As I understand it, in order to address the situation, the city, in part of a questionnaire, asked the citizens if someone who created more runoff should pay more of a fee to deal with stormwater as someone who created less. I'm sure that most respondents were thinking of the Walmart or Cabela's parking lot versus someone in a residential neighborhood with a single-family home. I would guess that people were overwhelmingly in favor of Walmart paying more than a single-family home. Our farms typically have a house, a couple of barns, and a gravel driveway. In every case, any runoff controlled, is controlled by the surrounding land that includes acres of grass or crops and a watershed system of terraces and ponds, which was installed at my own expense. Not a drop of water ever sees the inside of a storm sewer. Yet when I inquired about the amount of the fee for the farm that my 94-year-old mother lives, I was told that it would be nearly $500 a month after the first couple of years. Needless to say, I was outraged. A subsequent request came back with an estimate at just over $50 a month. While the second estimate seemed like a gift compared to the first one, it still seemed like too much to pay for managing stormwater that I already manage myself. Even more concerning was the estimate of the fee on ground that we have in the Missouri River bottoms. That ranged from $4.50 a month to $55 a month per parcel on land that has no buildings. And if there is any runoff, go straight to the Missouri River.
You have one minute, sir.
Any drainage pipes or culverts are purchased and maintained by members of my family. Although this new program, which I'm sure was conceived with the best of intentions, will cost my family hundreds of dollars a month, this is not something I can afford. I'm not Walmart, I'm just some guy with a gravel driveway. To me, this plan may have started off with good intentions, but it has some flaws and is not ready for approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Daniel Silva to the podium. Mary Collins will be on deck.
Daniel Silva, KCK. The KCK Chamber is proud to serve 550-plus members, including businesses, nonprofits, post-secondary institutions. As a member of the business organization, the Chamber prides itself on its role as convenor and a pro-business advocate, offering platforms for small and large businesses alike to have a voice in legislative issues that directly impact their operations and services. We at the KCK Chamber want to thank Mayor Alvey, County Administrator Doug Bach, and Director of Public Works Jeff Fisher and his entire team for working with us on trying to come up with a solution that works for the entire community. We do understand and support the need for a rate change to support infrastructure needs in our community. With that, we are hopeful that future collaboration and open dialogue will continue to evolve regarding this matter and that any issues that directly affect the Wyandotte County business and community at large go through this engagement process. We at the KCK Chamber support a stormwater plan that will generate sufficient funding for certain identified critical infrastructure improvements and operations and maintenance costs for a definite and set period of time. A plan that equitably and objectively and reasonably allocates really the related increased financial obligations across all property types, including business property, non-residential properties, which include businesses, churches, nonprofits. They all will be impacted by the rate change. And also, we support a plan that provides for the utilization where and available of additional sources of funding to equitably replace the stormwater fees assessed to all property types. So we understand that there will be an increase, we do support the increase. Businesses want to ensure that there is an equitable way of arriving at their rate, but also for us to look at outside funding streams to help support and offset some of these costs for the community at large. I think we were also asked before the Commission votes on passing a rate change to consider and ask questions around what the credit program will look like.
You have one minute, sir.
Thank you. For those businesses or property owners that have already invested in the stormwater runoff and to prevent more runoff, what that credit program specifically looks like for them, what the billing process and the appeals process looks like, and how labor-intensive and cost-intensive will that be? Will there be exceptions for those properties that are along the river? Will there be a sunset to this, to this rate change? I think, Jeff, you addressed it in your previous comments that you will revisit it from time to time. And again, to keep in mind that we're talking about impacting not just residential, but non-residential properties, which also include more than just businesses. So for you all to take all of that into consideration when you vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silva.
Mary Collins to the podium. Greg Kendall will be on deck.
Hi. My name is Mary Collins. I reside at 2225 Washington Boulevard in Kansas City, Kansas. I'd like to begin remarks by offering my thanks to all of you for undertaking this effort to make our community safer and improving the environmental quality of our neighborhoods. I'd also like to commend city staff and their consultant team for the incredible amount of high-quality work that they have put into this process, both in technical terms and in how public outreach was managed. I attended the very first public presentation at the Beatrice Lee Community Center in 2018 and the updated presentation held at the Neighborhood Resource Center in September. In between, I participated in the Citizens Advisory Group and attended all four sessions of that working group. We were presented with a good overview of the technical issues and various options for addressing our community's needs for stormwater management. If you take away nothing else from my remarks, please do note my admiration for the UG staff and their outstanding work on our behalf. You are well-served by Mr. Fisher and his staff, and we all are. That said, I find myself in disagreement with the final proposals before you this evening. One of the main principles that I considered in thinking about this initiative is that of fairness and equity. Every property that has impervious surface produces stormwater runoff that we, as a community, must deal with. We have neighbors that experience terrible flooding in their homes and some storm conditions. We have streets that we all use that are damaged by uncontrolled runoff. Uncontrolled runoff is an environmental challenge that we must meet. So every property must continue to the solution in proportion to their contribution to the problem. The most equitable way for me to meet that standard is through a flat rate fee, the option one before you, that is applied equally to all property, no matter their size- one before you, that is applied equally to all property, no matter their size or location.
You have one minute, ma'am.
Thank you. We have no objection to paying a flat fee for our electric or our natural gas or our water usage. It should not be different for this utility either. The proposed and end development credit program, which recognizes individual efforts to construct and maintain mitigation plans, is analogous to our individual efforts to install more insulation in our homes, to reduce water usage, and to use energy-efficient appliances. So, there is an option to address some of the concerns of one of the previous gentlemen. A tiered system forces those at the lower end of the tier to subsidize those at the higher end. That's also true between the tiers. That is not fair. It is not equitable. I understand that this is a new and contentious issue that you face this evening. It is a vitally important one, and one that should be implemented in the most equitable way possible, in my opinion, after spending a year on this.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Option one. Thank you.
Greg Kendall to the podium. El Nora Telles-Jefferson will be on deck.
Mayor, Commissioners, Staff, I'm Greg Kendall from Wyandotte Economic Development Council and a resident of Kansas City, Kansas. For us, I just have a few brief comments, but for us, it comes down to the importance of balance between what is actually needed by the plan, over what timeframe, and who bears the cost. No doubt, the stormwater fees being the same for residential and business has not been equitable. What we have appreciated is the UG team's willingness to have a lot of conversations and to engage. Jeff's team has done a wonderful job in the process, whether we like the options or not. The decision before you has been a long time coming, probably more than ten years in coming, and the decision you make can have an even longer-term impact. From an economic development perspective, we do have needs in this community that need addressed to maintain the economic vitality of both the residential and business community. My caution is not to swing the cost pendulum so far onto the commercial side that we slow or halt continued economic development. It is a balancing act with no easy answer. Our hope is that you'll keep in mind that there is a limit to how much we can or should ask from any one group. And whatever plan you determine is the right one, we encourage you to make sure that everybody can understand how their bill is being determined. For us, that's an ongoing issue. We're on the front line for business and commercial projects. If we can't figure out what their impervious square footage is, it's going to be difficult for us to communicate that throughout the process. So, we just would encourage you all to continue to the conversation and try to find the right plan that is a balance for everybody. Thank you.
El Nora Telles-Jefferson to the podium. Broderick Crawford, you'll be on deck.
Good evening. My name is El Nora Telles-Jefferson in Kansas City, Kansas. I want to thank the elected officials and also Jeff Fisher and his team. As he says, I've been a member of the Steering Committee. I've learned a lot. I still have a lot to learn, but I've certainly enjoyed the opportunity to do so and appreciate the transparency and the openness with which it's been conducted. Thank you again. This may not be the correct time to ask this question, but I do believe it should be addressed, either now or sometime in the future with something that says it will be addressed in the future. I remember that County Commissioner Doug Bach, during the period where we were looking to vote on the CNEP sales incentive, sales tax, and one of the things that Doug mentioned and says that the burden of that tax would not fall on the individual citizen, but more so the individual who purchased at the Legends, who bought at the Legends, of people who perhaps do not live in the county. So, this is the crux of what I'm stating. The assessment is one thing, how the rate is applied, what mathematical components are used in that. The other piece of that is the billing, and exactly where does that fall and upon whom does that fall? We're not talking about a new input, a new resource of money. So, we're talking about money that basically is going to come from the taxpayer and the citizen of Wyandotte County. So, if something is applied, if this is applied, say, for example, to a post-secondary institution, you look at how that post-secondary institution pays the bill right now. Does that institution go out and get a new source of funding, or is that charged and passed on to the rate payer, either in a mill levy or either tuition or this, whatever that is? And so, again, I want to repeat that while this may not be the time for that, I believe it should be looked at because we do not have a source of revenue. We have the same population of people, and how burdensome is that going to be on any one category of rate payer? Thank you.
Broderick Crawford to the podium. Rachel Jefferson will be our last speaker is on deck.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Again, as others have stated, I thank you all for your due diligence in pursuing this effort in addressing obvious unequitable situation with our stormwater. Certainly, I thank the staff also for the work they've done, but I have some concerns as it relates to community engagement. So, I've noticed that there were several sessions that were held in community centers, but to my knowledge, the number of residents participating were less than double digits. When you look at the sixty-five thousand mailers that were sent out, how many of those mailers actually had individuals who participate? It's one thing to send something out. It's another thing to actually engage with the actual residents. So, I would submit that certainly taking another look at what true resident engagement looks like in this community, because those are the individuals that are bearing the biggest burden of our taxes. So, how we are engaging those individuals that have to pay and continue to have to pay, I think, should have a greater priority than some of the business partners who often get tax abatements to do the work that they do. So, as a resident who lives at 824 State Avenue, as a business owner who is the president of the NBC Community Development Corporation, I would ask that you also consider relooking at how we are engaging our residents. I am certainly opposed to option two because it seems to skew the benefit to business owners. I'm certainly receptive to taking a look at residents like the gentleman who spoke earlier, but I think we really need to look at how we are burdening our taxpayers in this county with the highest tax burden in our area with additional fees. Thank you.
Rachel Jefferson to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you and all that great jazz. Really appreciate being part of the process, but I'm going to save most of my time for actually speaking to what we're here today. I served on the Citizens Advisory Committee, was able to attend three out of those four meetings. I really do appreciate the lengths that Public Works has gone to and this Commission has gone to to work the solution. I think we all have come to realize that this, whatever option we continue within the future, is necessary for our community to increase our stormwater rate fees, whether it be through the tiered option or the individual option. I am opposed to option two, mostly because of several things that people have already stated tonight. One, we are aware from sitting on the Citizens Advisory Committee that although Public Works did engage in a lot of community meetings or contacted community people to come to those meetings, the majority of the attendees were actually large impervious surface area owners. So, therefore, we didn't actually get to hear from those smaller impervious surface area owners in these meetings. I think, again, that speaks to what Broderick just said about how are we conducting community engagement as a whole in this city? Is it simply enough to mail out something and say, "We expect you to show up," or is it something that we really need to get boots on the ground and engage our residents so we have a more robust democracy? Also, I think this really boils down to something pretty simple. You pay for what you use. Individual rates, as was seen in the slideshow before, are generally seen as more equitable, best practice, and legally defensible. So, as we learned in these Citizen Advisory Committee meetings, it really is the best practice if we go for individual rate, instead of pushing the burden of this stormwater fee onto smaller impervious surface area owners. If a larger property owner wants to pay less, then they have the options to do that through the credit program, which I have all confidence in Public Works to figure out.
You have one minute, ma'am.
So, please, install green infrastructure. Apply for credits. That, in the end, only helps our general environmental condition, right? The gentleman that spoke earlier, the farmer, it sounds like he's already got a lot of green infrastructure on his property where he could very easily apply for the credit program. So, I think we need to be thinking about how we want to envision our future here, our environmental future, environmental health. And are we going to keep pushing the burden onto our residents that rightfully should be on people who are making money from our residents in this community? I also want to speak to something that was said that in our Citizens Advisory Committee, the consultants themselves stated that the notion of this deterring, this fee deterring future business in KCK is a false one. I think we get scared by that a lot. I think we hear this is going to stop business from coming to our community, so we can't do it. But is that really true? Let's investigate that. There are studies out there. Actually, I've asked the consultants for one, and they're going to be providing it to me. So, let's really know what we're talking about here when we're making this decision.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank each one of you for coming out tonight. It's very helpful to us. I would ask any member of the Commission, comments or questions. Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you. Thank you to all who took the time to speak tonight. While we have the benefit of staff here and our consultants, I'd like them to talk about something that I didn't hear was only briefly touched on, and that is the nature of the credit programs, and also, how under either scenario would a citizen be able to identify or otherwise confirm how much impervious surface they had? Those two key things. Thank you.
I'll take the lead on that and ask staff to help if I miss anything. There are three points that I noted. One, if it's ag or bacon, that is a four-fifty a month charge. If it's ag with hard surface, through that second round of public engagement, and as a result of that feedback, staff has developed a thirty-to-one ratio credit, so thirty green space to hard surface. I believe Mr. Knetter will be eligible for that. And then, there is a direct discharge credit. So, a property that's adjacent to the river, stormwater's not passing through the UG system, it's just passing over their property and right into the river, there is a seventy-five percent direct discharge credit as well. Your second question, which was how will they have access to the information they need?
How would a citizen be able to identify how much impervious surface, or if they had a question as to the amount that they'd been identified as having? How would that be verified, or to whom could they speak? And with regard to the credit, if you could address, say, for a situation like Mr. Knetter, I hope I'm not terribly off in his name, how his situation might apply to this thirty-one percent credit? And is there another type of credit for someone who has a smaller footprint?
Okay. I'll try to speak to the access to information and ask Anna to hit on the thirty-one, thirty-to-one credit ratio more in greater detail. So, I think there's a few different ways a citizen or a business can gain access to information. They can certainly call staff. There will also, or email. There will also be a website dedicated to all of the information around this program. And what we intend to do is have a feature on the webpage where they can go in and punch in their address, and it will tell them how much impervious surface they have and possibly calculate their monthly bill. That's our intention. Do you have anything to add on?
No. I mean, like Jeff said, if they just ask someone within Public Works or send an email, we can look up the impervious area for any parcel within the county and get them that information.
And then, could you speak to the thirty-to-one there?
Yeah. So, the ratio credit was something that we added just recently based on feedback that we received from property owners like Mr. Knetter. So, the ratio credit is based on a credit that Kansas City, Missouri also has. So, if a property has a ratio of green surface to hard surface of thirty-to-one or more, they can qualify for a credit of fifty percent. So, a property that is, you know, twenty acres large and has a house and a driveway would most likely qualify for that credit unless it's a very large house. Listening to Mr. Knetter talk, it also sounds like he may qualify for the direct discharge credit as well. If his property drains directly into the Kansas or the Missouri River, he would be eligible up to a seventy-five percent credit for that as well.
So, the property owner would have to ask specifically about what credit he or she may be eligible for, though. Is that correct?
Yes. So, right now, we can look up and see who might qualify for the ratio credit, because we do know the gross area and the impervious area for all of the parcels. But going forward, there would be a credit manual that would be available online and probably in print that would describe all of the different credits that are offered, what you need to do to qualify for those credits, and how you would apply for a credit. Thank you.
Jeff, so, in the, for instance, the direct discharge credit, why would that not be a one-hundred percent credit? I think I know the answer, but would ask that you explain.
Well, it's simply because they use, they benefit from the system to get there, to leave. If they're a business, they're using the stormwater system to meet their day-to-day needs, and so...
So, it's a system, there's still a system-wide charge just to do the basic infrastructure. That individual parcel may only produce this much, but there is a carrying cost, as it were, infrastructure cost, that has to be borne by every parcel.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner King?
Thank you, Mayor. How many people attended those meetings?
The second round of meetings?
How many people went to the meetings you guys had?
The second round was about a hundred and twenty.
Okay. So, a hundred and twenty-some, how many people live in Wyandotte County?
A hundred and sixty-three, a hundred and sixty-five thousand?
A hundred and some odd people went, and we have a hundred and sixty-seven thousand people living in Wyandotte County. I got an email from a senior citizen today from Piper. Said some of the Piper residents have heard that a vote will be taken tonight on new method of assessing taxes for water drainings. We have not received any written information on this method of assessment. We have not gotten an opportunity to vote on this method. If we had received this information, we would have had the opportunity to vote. The assessment by payment driveway would have faced a great deal of opposition from western Wyandotte County. My hope is that you can express these concerns in the meeting, and she'd like to be here, but she cannot drive at night. You know, you have a hundred people making decisions for a hundred and some odd thousand people, and they haven't been contacted properly, because we did this through the newsletter, our Facebook, and our website. Is that what we did?
Yeah, and also on UGTV and through the Citizen Newsletter.
There's a lot of people that don't have a computer, don't even look at the TV that much. They're not engaged, and what's going to happen when this passes, or if it passes, then we're going to get phone calls saying, "Where the hell did this come from?" Something that you have to think about, too, is the school districts just passed their school bond, Piper and Wyandotte County, right? All that money's already accounted for. Where are they going to come up with the remaining money? Juco, I guess, is somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy thousand dollars. I don't know what Donley College is, but you ought to be madder than hell. You know, none of those projects are west of 435. And what's this going to do to the new businesses? And why would we want to rush something through when only a couple of hundred people had the chance to talk? We should have went out walking through the neighborhoods and asking them, "Hey, we have an issue. What do you think?" Not a survey that we sent out with some questions I thought were ridiculous, but what do you think about what's coming on? Because you didn't respond to us before, because a lot of them just don't know. And I'm telling you right now that there are some people like my mother-in-law and father-in-law that cannot afford to pay a dime more than what they're paying. I'm extremely frustrated by this because we didn't do it the way we should, and we're not anywhere close, in my mind, where we can pull the trigger on something, but we don't know it's going to work or not. Every single parcel should have known exactly what was going to happen at the Knetter farm. He should have known, "All right, here's what's going to happen in my place." Instead of them having to call and say, "Hey, what's going to happen to me? Oh, we're going to charge the X amount of dollars and you tell us that's too much." Instead of them having to call and say, hey, what's going to happen to me? Oh, we're going to charge the X amount of dollars until you tell us that's too much. We're supposed to be transparent and we're about as solid as this blue piece of paper. Because we can't see what's going on. And I can't explain it to my constituents. And I can tell you right now, a lot of them have voiced their opinion. And I know some of the commissioners think this is a great idea, but I vote the way the district says and the district does not like this.
Commissioner Bynum?
Thank you. I have a comment and then a couple of questions. My comment is that I do continue to have serious concern for the burden that either option one or two places on our churches, our schools and our other nonprofit entities. So I just want to be on record that I'm not satisfied yet with the burden on those specific categories. Question, one of the questions I have is, do we know yet how we would manage the situation of a commercially leased property where it's the renter who's holding the utility bill? Or are we taking a position that that's just between the building owner and the renter to figure out among themselves? So that would be one question I would have.
I think generally we intend to bill whoever is on the BPU bill and then that, they would work that out. We can change things.
I mean, is it our overall intent? Is it our overall intent that this stormwater utility fee would be borne by the property owner?
Yes.
So when we have a situation where we're going to put this on the utility bill and that bill is being paid by a commercial property renter, then I guess they can just duke it out, basically. I mean, if I'm the property owner at that point, I'm going yay and sorry dude. So I don't know that, you know, we have a satisfactory resolution for that. Along the lines of what we've heard some other people say, we do manage here at the unified government to calculate our annual tax bills and get those off in the mail. We get a rendition mailed in the spring and then we get a bill mailed in the winter. So we have the capacity to do some sort of parcel-by-parcel mailer. Perhaps as another effort at community engagement in terms of here is the impervious area of the property that on our records you own and here's what your bill's going to look like. And do I understand that the goal is that this would begin January of 21?
That is correct.
We've got a year to work on communicating with every parcel holder with regards to what their potential bill could look like, kind of along the lines of what Commissioner Kane was saying. And then last, just a comment, but in the community, we have multiple good examples of not only organizations like Rachel Jefferson's Historic Party's Midtown Association, which does do good community engagement, but county-wide community engagement efforts. We have the example of the Affordable Care Act and the efforts at getting folks enrolled in health insurance coverage. We were very effective with that several years ago with the rollout of the ACA in cutting the number of uninsured in Wyandotte County in half because of those kinds of boots-on-the-ground community engagement efforts. In 2012, when Google came to town and said, you may all not remember this as clearly as I do, but you had to turn your neighborhood green so that you could get the Google Fiber. You can know that we had boots on the ground all over this town to turn every neighborhood green for Google Fiber. So we do have examples of how to put people on the streets to communicate something that should be a good thing for our community. And I think if we had some more conversations about that kind of community engagement, it could be really helpful to this process. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. And to Fisher, I want to appreciate the work that you all put into this proposal tonight. As I recall, when we first brought this to the commission, we asked that you would go back and measure this matter of need because it's a significant undertaking for our community. It involved basically whether residents or whether the brush business. In my opinion, I think that you all did the best that you all could to have tried to accomplish this. That's not to say that it was a perfect attempt and as far as I am concerned, I think we still have time to try to make sure that we can do it as many times as possible. At some point, we'll run it aside. But unless, I don't know, is there some reason why we need to make a decision on this by 31st? I don't know who answers that question.
But I think it's only, the only reason is that the UG has went through a public engagement for a solid year. The needs are not going away. It's getting more expensive. Just seems like, it just seems like that we need to make the decision as soon as the commission is willing.
And that's fair enough. I think that's a reasonable answer. And I could say that we do too, I agree with that in terms of the 31st. But one of the things that I will offer is that in the presentation, you, the presentation stated that the new, the new format, whether it be option one or two, would be or is easier to understand. And I would push back on that. And I would just ask if you bring up the screen that would show options one and two. Just wanted to share or offer my thoughts regarding that, comparing, I want to say comparing options one. So if I were a pastor of a church that had a large lot, if, how would I communicate to them what my fee would be? If I would, so would we be saying, for instance, just to say what fell into the third column around the 200 and so you see option one would be 268 and option two would be 189? How would, how would I communicate to that person? Would that be a monthly, I mean, this is just for people that are watching. Would this be a monthly fee? Would this be an annual fee?
This is a monthly fee. So the numbers that are shown on this table are the monthly fees.
So that person would have to go from a $4.50 monthly fee to a 189.81, just the lower of those two.
Yes, that is correct.
I don't know that that is very easy to understand. Now, we've gone to this screen. If you would go to the other one that I saw later on in the presentation, it seemed more detailed with me, um, I think that we need to be mindful of how we communicate that to all of our residents in terms of helping them to understand where they fall. So we take the burden off of them trying to figure out where they fall. And so I don't know how we do that, but I think we could help them to understand where they would fall within those ranges. There was some discussion about keeping the flat rate option. I suppose that if we in fact were to look at keeping the flat rate option, we would probably have to increase the flat rate in order to deal with the issues. I don't know to what degree that would be in order to cover. Have you all looked at that in terms of how much that would be, if you looked at a flat rate option?
Yeah, I think we're trying to get to a slide that would help with that, Commissioner. Right there. From 450 to 869 and then almost quadruple in that period.
Per month?
Per month. For everybody.
For everybody. And that would cover our costs?
Yes.
If I had a large church property, I think I might like the 1146 in 2021 versus the 189.81. It's just a thought on that.
It's probably worth noting that about 80% of the parcel owners fall within the like tier one and two and option two. So about, that's how many parcel owners are going to be doubled and quadrupled in that period, 80% of your property owners.
From 450 though? $4.50 per month?
To 1676 by year 2026.
Per month?
Per month.
Mayor, I'm sorry, just want to clarify. So what we're saying is in option one and two, either of those, Jeff, please correct me if I'm wrong, about 80% of the properties within Kansas City, Kansas would stay at 450 in the first few years.
That is correct, in the first few years, but ultimately we'd be down to close to zero.
In option one, yes, that is correct. It's about 76%. In option two, it's lower, it's about 45%.
Thank you for clarifying. But with the flat fee?
0%.
Thank you.
I think that helps make my point. The other point that I would, other thing that I would ask then is for those persons that might be eligible for a credit, one of the two or three that you offered tonight, is there, could we, would it be unreasonable to just be able to push that information to them as opposed to acquiring that they find out for themselves and then come to a website? I think if we'd be more proactive with that to let them know that, hey, here's what's happening, whichever way that we decide this. But there are some options that we, that are available to you. I would just offer that we would be more proactive in offering that information to them and helping them to understand how to navigate that.
I believe we can do that, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner McKernan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Fisher, you and I have talked many times about this. I've talked with your team many times and I want to echo what everybody else has said that you all need a lot of thanks for confronting a monster of a problem. We as a community have neglected for decades to invest in our infrastructure. The bill is coming due and we're trying to figure out how to wrap our arms around it for the life, health and safety of people who are here in Wyandotte County. And so we have to be very appreciative of that. I have joked with you before that when you arrived, we handed you the city and said, it's all busted. Please fix it, but don't charge us any more money for that. And we know that that's an impossibility. I do agree that as much effort as we've put into it, we haven't really engaged the public, I don't think, as much as we could have or should have done. And I remember vividly the phone call I got after the very first public meeting we had. A woman who, similar to Commissioner Kane's constituent, was under the mistaken impression that we were voting on something that day. And she was incensed that she hadn't received any notification of it. So we as a community need to wrap our arms and our brains around how we do that better at the more granular level. And if that means that we walk door-to-door, then I think we may need to consider that and consider who we can help engage, help, who we can engage to help us do all of that. I'm really appreciative of the sessions that you've had with us as commissioners. And I can certainly say that you have made remarkable changes to your original proposal based in part on feedback you got from the public, but based in part on feedback you got from us. Because certainly I've been vocal in some of the feedback that I've given. I am on, well, first of all, I will say that as it's presented here today, I think option one is the most equitable. And you and I have talked about this before. I do think that the sliding scale based on impervious area is more equitable. I don't like, and we've talked about this before, I don't like when we get to the border of tiers and you've got one situation on top of that line and you've got a completely different situation on the bottom of that line where we transition into the next tier up. And so I'm really glad we don't have to make a decision on this tonight because I have many things that I still need to think about in this. But right now I feel that option one is the most equitable. I'm on record and I'll stay on record as saying, I feel that the fee increases are too steep, too fast. I think the trajectory, the slope of those increases goes up too fast. I think our first couple of years are actually pretty manageable, at least in what I've looked at so far. But then when they start to almost exponentially rise over the next four to eight years, I feel like the burden ramps up and at that point it's going to start to become unbearable. So I'm on record in previous meetings and I stay there. My impression is that the slope is too high. Early years are manageable, but there's a time bomb waiting for down the road. Now, if I'm wrong, please educate me about that. But that's my impression as I, as I look at that. And I have to say, I also recognize that cutting down the slope of those increases, any reduction in the amount of money that we can devote to stormwater problem mitigation is going to reduce the scope of projects. You've already cut it in half and I absolutely realize that if we collect less money, we will need to further trim our project list. And delaying many of our projects could have a very tangible and very negative impact on residents and business owners here in this county. And I understand that you want to prevent those negative impacts. But we're in a balancing act right now on how much of this very necessary infrastructure work we can accomplish balanced against the burden of those people who both will benefit from it, but will also pay for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you, Mayor. My question, I have a few questions if I may. These figures that you offered in these options, do they take into account any of the credit programs suggested or discussed?
No.
They haven't, so we will see the financials impacted as Commissioner.
Let me just make sure I'm following. I think I do understand your question better and I apologize. So we have accounted for a certain percentage of the parcel owners taking advantage of those credits. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. That's, the next question I have is the impact of the financials through the credit program. Plus, we will probably have a set off or a write-off portion that we'll need to set aside. We see that with our utilities and other organizations. Do we have a percentage in a dollar value of what that set off and write-off might be?
Well, we have accounted for that.
I honestly can't tell you the percentage or the dollar amount off the top of my head, but yes, we have included a contingency for doubtful allowances.
So those are two things that will affect, that you say will affect the revenue, but are already included in the presentations tonight with the options that were presented.
Yes, sir.
For, for the public and others and maybe listening, what about the sidewalks, alleys and public streets? Are they included as part of the property owner's impervious area?
The, I'm sorry, ask that again?
The sidewalks, alleys and/or streets?
No, they are, they are not included.
They are not inclusive.
No.
I think that's important that they understand that that is not part of the stormwater fee. And the last two items I have is the billing process will be handled through our BPU, which I would imagine if I was a customer, saw my increase in my BPU bill, that an angst is going to be given and be directed towards our utility and not necessarily the unified government.
Yeah, they would field a lot of calls and obviously a lot of those would be forwarded to UG staff, my staff.
And thank you for that. I think that's important that we ensure that we have partners in this process, but not to burden them any more than what we may already have. The last and final thing is, could you share with us what happens if we do nothing?
Well, all those photos that we showed up there and the over 1,000 open work orders, they'll just keep getting bigger. The problems will get more expensive. Property values will be impacted. Residents will be frustrated. Businesses will be frustrated. Businesses will be frustrated. That's the life of no chains. And I, if I could, I, because it reminds me, Commissioner Bynum brought this up. So, the next phase of work before January of twenty-twenty-one would be working through those billing issues with BPU, setting up our, our, our staff and resources to, to field the inquiries, make that information accessible, send that information out to, set up the website. All of those things will be done in that one year, eleven months.
Okay. So, I, I want to clarify a couple of things. I, I think one of the effects, if, if we don't move forward on this, we still are to have a bill due for the Wing Wall, right? At Turkey Creek, we have to pay for that. We had to appropriate funds for that. Because it was collapsing and it was getting worse.
Yes.
That's correct. We also had to pay in order to prevent greater damage and greater expense later on for an Argentine pump station.
Correct.
So, we're already on tap for those expenses.
Yes.
That's correct. Okay. So, this points to the necessity, you know, I, I think it's important for us to understand that no one wants to pay more for anything. That's a fundamental. We're always looking to get more for less. That's a fundamental. It's also a fundamental that the longer you delay maintenance on important infrastructure, the worse it becomes, the more expensive it becomes, the more damage it does, the more it causes damage to the investment. I would think if we look back over the last sixty to seventy years in the history of Kansas City, Kansas, perhaps Wyandotte County as a whole, but I don't want to include Edwardsville and Bonner Springs in this, is we have failed to invest in our community. We have failed to do the things that make Kansas City, Kansas, an attractive, a more attractive, more safe, more livable community. And every time we fail to do that, we put additional pressure on the infrastructure, we put additional pressure on our property values. And so, what that simply does is, when people take a look and say, do I want to build my business in Kansas City, Kansas? Do I want to live in Kansas City, Kansas? Do I raise my family in Kansas City, Kansas? And they come into neighborhoods, and they find neighborhoods which have been neglected for decades, they make a decision and they find a better place to go. No one wants to pay more. And everybody, if they're going to, we're going to pay more, we want someone else to pay for it. I think we have to understand that if we don't take steps and we don't do it quickly, we're simply going to continue to fall behind. These things have to be done, and we have to find the spirit within our community to understand that if we want this community to grow and to be the kind of place that we're proud to bring people into, and for our children to be, to come up to and to raise their families here, we've got to stand up and saying, we know where this can be in ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, and we know it's going to be some sacrifices, and we're willing to make those sacrifices because it's important. We deserve it. And we have to get beyond this, this point where we say, well, it's not my neighborhood. We have to look that it's, if we don't invoke, and I would assume that so many of these projects, these infrastructure projects, are really probably correlated with our poorest census tracts. I don't know if that's a fact, but it would seem to me, because when you don't do those things, then that actually creates the poverty that is burdening us now, and has continued, and has burdened us for decades. It seems to me, when we launched this effort, we understood that there were things we needed to do, they should have been done a long time ago, it got kicked down the road, I'm not sure why, but I have a feeling it's because no one wanted to have this discussion. No one wanted to step up and say, yep, we understand this is a sacrifice, we're going to have to do it. We also understood that we have to find a more equitable way to distribute the cost, to allocate the burden. And the impervious surface rate, again, has to be a fundamental part of the solution. When you look at what we intend to do, what we intend to assess, this is in line with other municipalities. This is not out of the ordinary. This is what, you know, you look what Topeka, Overland Park is doing, we're well within the range of what others are doing. I agree that the community engagement has to be better. We have to do that in so many fronts. But the community engagement means people have to stand up and say, I care enough to get involved, I care enough to find out what's going on. Communication is a desire on both sides to communicate, and oftentimes, it's one way, it's only one way. Don't bother me until I'm going to have to pay more in taxes, and then I'll get involved. Again, this, no one likes to pay more, and if we do have to pay more, we want someone else to do it, or we want to delay it, we want to put it off, well, we've done that too long, it doesn't work, we're going to continue, we're going to decline in so many ways, if we don't find ways to invest in our infrastructure, improve the quality of life in our community so that we continue to grow our families, our neighborhoods. So, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, for anyone who's been engaged in this in any way, even those who came in late, those who were there from the beginning, thank you for your time and effort. These kinds of conversations are necessary, they're vital. And I think this was a great effort by our community, and I have to say this, sometimes when staff comes before us to present things to us, we put them on trial. We beat up on staff because they're doing the hard work of trying to find out, presenting us to options, and then we put them in the, in the seat of, well, we don't like this, so we don't like what you're saying. No, they're doing the work for us. That's their job, that's what they're paid for. I want to thank you for your efforts, I think it was well done.
Thank you.
That concludes our meeting for the evening. We are adjourned.